Here except for Mrs. Byer. Is that correct?
That looks right. Where is Mr. Rizlevich? Is he here? Oh, there you go.
Okay, I see him. Okay, thank you. And please unmute yourselves so that you can respond. Ms. Mr. Maraschi?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Gina Cola?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Andy and Stella, do you have a report for us tonight?
Yes, we do.
Wonderful. Okay, go for it.
So, starting with the high school, the senior awards were presented on June 2nd. There was also a virtual battle of the books run by Ms. Puccio on June 8th, using Zoom with over 20 student participants, including another high school. And seniors will be returning all school materials June 10th through June 18th during scheduled individual appointments and receiving a gift bag from Project Graduation and senior award checks. Our drive-through commencement procession for seniors to receive diplomas will be held on June 22nd at 2:00 p.m., followed by a senior car wake parade and a 6:00 p.m. virtual graduation ceremony. So now at the middle school, the eighth grade award video is going live on June 22nd at 9:00 a.m. The eighth grade graduation video is going live on June 23rd at 9:00 a.m. And links will be emailed and posted. And instead of going to the HP Public Library, close students are working with a librarian via Zoom weekly. In her first session, she explained the remote resources available. And then she has been reading to the students. This week, she is going to start a chapter book and read to them each week.
At Bartle, the fifth grade moving up virtual ceremony will be on June 18th at 10:00 a.m. Virtual Spirit Week will be held the week of June 15th. Our virtual whole school end of the year meeting party will be on Friday, June 19th. And parents/guardians can pick up student belongings at scheduled grade level times between June 17th and June 22nd. Parents and guardians will receive the schedule this week. And lastly, at Irving, all K and one classes will have their virtual end of the year parties the week of June 15th. Further information will come from the classroom teachers. Our last lunch with the principal will be this week. These meetings have been wonderful. Our students created beautiful thank you cards that were delivered last week to the central businesses in town, along with a sign of gratitude. Our thanks to Mrs. Zara and Mrs. Magaziner for their help with this project. And lastly, student belongings pickup is from June 17th to the 22nd. Please refer to Ms. McNally's email or Irving's social media for the full schedule.
Thank you, guys. Now, one of the best parts of the year. Scott, your report, and we're going to do some awards.
Yes, I'm quite excited. There are 29 of us here, and I see a number of families in the room. Thank you for being here. I'm also very appreciative that our three upper elementary, middle, and high school principals are here. So tonight, we're going to do something a little different. Whereas we would have been able to honor our special graduates and moving up students in each school, Bartle Middle and High School, in live, tonight we'll do it virtually. So I'm going to ask that Ms. Knapp, the principal of Bartle School, step up to the mic, speak a little bit about the Spirit Awards and the honorees. Go ahead, Ms. Knapp, you're up. Just unmute yourself. Thank you.
Okay. So I am so thrilled to be here tonight to honor two amazing Bartle Dolphins. Every year, two fifth grade students are selected to receive the Spirit of Bartle Award. This award is given to students that exemplify the qualities of excellent character through their actions, words, and deeds. The two students selected are students that think about their words and actions and then make choices that are right for themselves and others in the community. They treat others the way they want to be treated. They always have the willingness to do hard work, and they never give up when it gets tough. They continuously work to make our community a better place. They are kind towards others and always willing to help another Bartle Dolphin in need. They make choices that help to make them the best person they can be. They do what they think is right, even when no one is watching. They are responsible, dependable, and fair, and they are truthful and sincere. I am so pleased to announce this year's Spirit of Bartle recipients are Cecilia Tanner Ricardi and Dorian Crocco. Congratulations. I am so proud of both of you.
Wow, it's not the same. Oh, yeah, we can do clapping emojis. That's too hard for me. Clap, clap.
Oh, but I see the smiles. I'm so excited.
Congratulations, guys.
I can actually see both of you on the screen, so I'm happy. Congratulations, Cecilia. Congratulations, Dorian.
Can you wave to us? So we know, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Furtstadt, Ms. McManus Smith, Ms. Stahl. Look who's here, Ms. Crane. Oh, fantastic. Thank you, teachers, for being here. So at this time, we would be walking you down the Bartle gym aisle.
And I would be giving you your plaque, which you will be getting soon.
Ooh, screenshot. Screenshot. Here we go. Screenshot?
I don't have it.
Everybody look happy.
Thank you so much for being here. I'd love for the Spirit of Wardies to stick around so you could see what happens at the middle and the high school level. So just stick around for a few minutes, and then you're welcome to leave. With that, I'm going to transition to... Actually, Mr. Stark is just joining us. He probably wants to also be present to say hello. Mr. Stark? Hey, thanks for joining us, Mr. Stark.
Thank you.
We're going to move forward now, and I'm going to ask Ms. Brady to speak a little bit about our eighth grade honorees.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. This is my first awards ceremony, albeit virtually, but I'm very happy to be here. So thank you. So we have two big awards at the end of eighth grade. The first I'll be speaking about is the Academic Citizenship Award. Let me read this first, and then I'll go on a little bit. The Academic Citizenship Award is given each year to the student who most embodies the qualities we hope to instill in all students: hard work, respect for others, participation in the community, and a love of learning. This year's recipient is a student who impressed teachers with her positive attitude and dedication. She is consistently engaged in the classroom and strives to do her best. She takes feedback given from teachers and tries to incorporate it into her work. Often, she sets the tone for the classroom, leading by example, choosing the right course of action despite what others may be doing. She has always been willing to lend a hand and works well with her peers, both inside and outside of the classroom. She also participated in sports and clubs this year, embracing the school community. It is with great pleasure that I present the Academic Citizenship Award to Xena Borde. Congratulations, Xena!
Thank you.
So I just... You look stunning, my dear. I haven't seen you. You look so beautiful and grown up. But I wanted to tell you that you will be presented this award again in the eighth grade award ceremony video. So look out for that. And an eighth grade teacher will be giving that to you because they were the ones that voted on this and came up with this, and so it's important that you hear it from them, too. So look out for that video, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, darling.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Congrats.
Thank you.
I'm so glad you're here, Xena. And Ms. Brady, congratulations on your first...
Oh, thank you. It's exciting.
Welcome.
So should I go on?
Yep, please.
So our next award is a mathematics award. So every year, the BKC CPA firm offers an award to a student graduate who exemplifies the practices of a good mathematician. This year's recipient has stood out as an advanced computational thinker from his early elementary years, demonstrating abilities to decompose complex problems. As a fifth grader, this student created a survey for his peers based on the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and analyzed the data to conclude that students were not engaging in the technology standards mandated by the state. As the student journeyed onto the middle school, he went above and beyond to help others, sharing both his knowledge and passion for mathematics. I am proud to present this year's award to Elliot Lee, who truly embodies the mathematical practices. Congratulations, Elliot!
Thank you.
All right, Elliot. Hey, Elliot. All right, Elliot.
So Elliot, I just, with all of my heart, congratulate you, and you are really a trendsetter and have just been an exemplar student, and I really just want you to know how much we value and look up to you. Dr. McCosia will actually be presenting this award to you in the eighth grade award ceremony, so please watch that because I know that you and she have had a very special relationship, and she has a lot of kind things to say about you. So look out for that, okay, my friend? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Elliot, congratulations to you. Thank you, Ms. Brady. Thank you so much. Mr. Lassiter, would you like me to present your slides?
I definitely would. I'm trying to... I see Joyce Bo, I think, off the other screen, on my screen. I know she's here. If she could show herself, I'd love for her and Julia to see the presentation and make sure that they're here.
Okay.
Unlike Ms. Knapp and Ms. Brady, both of these students already know they were receiving these honors. Typically, these honors of valedictorian and salutatorian are given at our senior awards, which we've already had. And so we put together a slideshow video that actually is kind of abbreviated here. And should I put up the slide? There they go. So I put together a quick presentation here.
Mr. Lassiter, would you like me to give you control?
That would be wonderful.
You have control.
Thank you, sir. So I'm going to try to click forward this slide. Here we go.
There you go.
So I'm going to speak about both students and actually read from the slides that we put together in our senior video. Let me just... There we go. And so first, I want to honor our salutatorian, Julia Woodward. And before I do that, I just want to announce that every year when we actually identify who our salutatorian and valedictorian are, we run it strictly on GPA. And so both of these students are wonderful students, not only because of their academic prowess, but because of who they are in the school. Because, to be quite honest, the separation between these two students is .033 in their GPAs. There really is no difference between either one of them, and so it's just a slight mathematical thing, which I'm sure Dr. Woodward understands. So our salutatorian, Julian Woodward. Julia has the kind of leadership that is difficult to teach. People gravitate to her, not because of the power of her voice or the confidence of her ideas, but because of her unwavering passion and willingness to do whatever it takes to make things better. She led on the soccer field, in her classrooms, as one of the legendary officers of H.P. Monk. And in fact, she was secretary general of our first virtual model UN that had over 400 students attend from 80 different countries, or 80 different schools in 20 different countries, which was just an amazing, amazing undertaking by that club. And so, Julia, we love you. We don't know what we're going to do without you, and we look forward to your speech coming up in our graduation ceremony on the 22nd.
Thank you so much.
Our pleasure. And let's forward to... Sorry about that. My control is a little bit wonky on my side. Does everybody see the next slide? Yeah. And so let me speak about Joyce. And Joyce is our valedictorian, and as you see, she's headed towards Princeton... Oh, I didn't do that. Headed towards Princeton University next year. And Joyce, beyond her extraordinary talents, Joyce has demonstrated a strong growth mindset. She has inspired many of us by working hard to become great at things that were once difficult for her. Her keen insight and ability to problem solve is amazing. Her perseverance will serve her well in the years ahead. And what I most remember about Joyce, and both of these students I've had since sixth grade, is Joyce, in middle school, was not a confident student, but she really took it on herself to become quite a leader in our high school when she came over in ninth grade and has led in the environmental club in our National Society with the shared tables at our lunches. And she's been an amazing student, the confidence that she has now has obviously launched her on the right path, and we look forward to her future success. And I absolutely look forward to her speech as well at graduation. And so I give you both air hugs if we can get that last slide. Again, it's very... Because if I was with you guys at the senior award ceremony, I absolutely would be giving you a big hug and putting those medals around your necks that you both earned.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lassiter. Congratulations, Julia and Joyce.
Congrats, guys. Congrats.
Congratulations. Thank you so much for being here. This is being recorded, so if you'd like to circle back to the celebration, you can do so probably this evening around 10 o'clock. It will be posted on the website, front page of the website. So with that, I'm going to let the honorees and their principals leave the meeting if they'd like to do so, because I'm going to shift gears and make a presentation. Those of you who wish to stay, you're free to stay.
Please stay.
Thank you, guys.
Take care. Thank you, principals, for being here. Appreciate it.
Everybody.
Okay. Looks like everybody's heading out. With that, I'm going to transition to a brief presentation I'd like to make to keep the board apprised of our planning for next year. Bear with me here. Next school year. And I'd also like to return to a couple of items that I began discussing. Forgive me here, I'm trying to find my... There it is. Slideshow. That I began to discuss briefly last week. So we are, as a community, confronting all kinds of crises right now. One of them, which I'd like to leverage to do better for a whole population of individuals in our country, and another to... I'd like to try to help either remain healthy or return back to school at some point in November, December likely, maintaining safety. So first, I'd like to talk a little bit about the efforts that our district has been making in addition to what I shared with you last week to fight racism, hate, and bias. So since last week, and thanks a lot to Monique Coleman's input, I have been working with our humanities supervisor, Michelle Rogers, request to double down on our efforts to fight racism in particular. We have reached out to a gentleman out at Teplin University, who some of my colleagues have been working with, Dr. Edward Fergus, who I recommend you learn more about at some point after this meeting. Dr. Fergus is recognized as being the coordinator of something called the Disproportionality and Equity Lab. I'll have more information to share with the board and the community likely in about two weeks. I'll try to do so by email once we solidify our relationship with Dr. Fergus. But we are a cost of being a member of this consortium that would be part of the Disproportionality and Equity Lab, a group of schools in the Pennsylvania and New Jersey region that are all working together to do the same thing, to fight racism, promote equity, fight hate and bias. So I'll follow up with the board and the community as soon as I can. The other thing I'd like to be sure that the board recognizes is we are still committed to codifying in our curriculum explicit anti-racism instruction. That would also include anti-hate and anti-bias instruction. As you know, besides the murder of a black man at the hands of police violence, we've also seen here more locally since September, an uptick in our incidences of harassment, intimidation, bullying against the LGBTQ community, and several antisemitic incidents. So whereas we initially planned to codify in our language arts curriculum, social studies curriculum, rather, teaching in a very systemic and engaging manner, very directly about anti-hate, we're not going to expand that effort to bring onboard the language arts teachers. So I've incorporated into next year's budget additional summer curriculum revision work to include both language arts and social studies teachers. We'll start meeting in late June to focus on anti-racism, anti-hate, and anti-bias. Something else that I do want to share with the board and the community is an event that's coming up that some of our teachers have already registered for on behalf of groups of their students. I know that Angie Thomas is popular among many educators. Jennifer Ostege, in fact, our ex middle school principal, and I was recently talking about Angie's work, where she's holding a free session about the Black Lives Matter movement on June 22nd, absolutely free. So I sent out the directives to our supervisors to bring onboard teachers and students, and we are getting a nice, healthy level of interest. The other thing I'd like to point out is something, again, I have to thank Monique Coleman for steering me towards, and that is to have a listening session this Thursday for particularly our black students. I've reached out to some of our faculty. I will be reaching out to our leadership as well to join me on Thursday. The time has not been determined yet. To hold a listening session, to have our black students talk about the Black Lives Movement in context of the school environment. And it's something which I might be considering incorporating as a regular monthly forum. We had for a while a group called Seat at the Table. It took a step back. I'm hoping we can bring that back full on, and perhaps the monthly sounding board sessions could be an impetus to bring back that organization full force, as it was several years ago before I came onboard. So I felt like I had to touch base with the board and the community about the continuing efforts we're making to address racism, hate, and bias. But I do need to return to what I assured the board and community I would talk about, and that's the District Safety Committee's recent meeting that focused on reentry to school at some point, either in the fall or sometime in December or winter. Frankly, the more I hear the scuttlebutt from the Department of Education, and I talk to my colleagues, the more I recognize clearly, we're not going to come back in September. I mean, I just don't see it happening. There are too many factors, too many variables that won't be in place until likely late fall, early winter. Regardless, we're making plans to prepare our students for the transition. One thing that I talked about that we're going to be doing over the summer is incorporating a mental health support program that I call HP SOAR. I also need to let the board know that we're going to reinstate the Irving and Bartle ship program. Initially, I told the board that we were going to not run the program, but because we've had a very strong level of interest from parents to bring that program back, we are going to run it. We're going to do so in August for a shortened period of time. It's going to be done remotely, and I'll be working with Ms. Knapp and Ms. McNally to make sure that that kicks off for kids, likely the first week of August. Regarding HP SOAR, I did mention to the board that these are going to be live programs we like to run at our each building. We're going to do it in small groups of no more than 10 per the governor's directive that we don't have more than 10 people in a space, outdoors or indoors in large spaces if weather doesn't permit for us to be outdoors. The program will run from July 6th through August 6th, Mondays through Thursdays from 8:00 to 12:00. Depending on the number of students who elect to participate, we will run either two sessions for each group of students, or if we can do so, because we don't have such great numbers, daily sessions from Monday to Thursday, 8:00 to 12:00. The mental health educators in our district and I met last week. I got their input. We solidified our program. A posting went out today. Scott Roth, Dr. Scott Roth, our clinical psychologist at the Teen Center, strongly recommended that we focus on not only providing mental health support, addressing anxiety, needs, depression that some of our students may have been dealing with over the last four months into the summer. He strongly recommended, and we're going to incorporate into our program, that we teach kids about coping skills, coping skills they can take into through the summer and into fall when they likely start to worry about what school's going to be like now that they're six months later back with their peers. We will group the students according to need. Kim Nizelak, another one of our school psychologists, Maurice Elias disciple, has encouraged us to use a UCLA mental health screening tool that was specifically adapted for the COVID-19 crisis. So what we intend to do is when students and/or their parents and guardians signal us that they'd like to participate, we will screen them. The screening will take about 15 minutes. It will take place over Zoom by one of our psychologists, and we will then identify the group that that student should join. The mental health specialists were very adamant that we group students according to need and according to age group. So that's something which I will certainly heed. Also happening as a means of transitioning kids out of the end of the school year into the summer, then into the fall, is the event that I touched on last week called Welcome to the World. This event is something that I've been working with Asher Burrell and a friend of his, who's now become a friend of mine, Keith Strickland, developed. Keith is in Atlanta. He is an individual who was incarcerated, had a very difficult childhood, came out of it successfully, and now is in the fields of transforming kids' lives. Somebody who I've met with now for about three months off and on via text and Zoom. The three of us are coming together. We're going to be creating a half ceremony, half celebration, first for our high school seniors from 3:00 to 3:30, and then for all high school students and eighth graders from 3:30 to 6:00. There'll be a comedian, there'll be a DJ, there'll be several speakers. We anticipate a current NFL player, a woman from the WNBA will be speaking, talking about the importance of standing up for ourselves and fighting for what we believe is right and also being productive in societies. We transition either to post-secondary life or to the next grade level, to the next step in kids' lives. That's going to happen on June 16th from 3:00 to 6:00. And anyone here at the board is invited as well. Just click the link that you'll see published at the bottom of that flyer. Now, let's go back to what I opened with, and that's a mention that the District Safety Committee met on June 4th. You see here a snapshot of the committee. We have representatives on this committee who met again last week from the police department, local clergy, board members, HPDA representatives, Jupolo, our local Office of Emergency Management Director, all the people included in the operation of our school district and the maintenance of safety and health. And I'd like to touch on a couple of the things that we have settled on. First of all, we would like to go ahead and make a purchase of masks. I will point out that the Finance and Facilities Committee met before this meeting and made a very valid recommendation that instead of just focusing on buying 2,000 masks, per se, buying enough masks so that multiple masks, so that every one of our students can be provided with a reusable covering, preferably up to three that they can use for the entire year. So we will return to our quotes and planning and likely try to... You get a quote for something like three masks for each student, so close to about 7,500 masks. By the way, all funding will come, or most, I should say, most funding will come from the federal CARES grant that's purposed for this kind of thing. We're also looking to buy shields for offices, barriers, similar to what you've seen locally at Stop Shop and some other local establishments. We'll have that all in place by the fall. Couple of concerns that came up at the finance... A couple of concerns that came up at the Finance Committee that I thought I'd share with you regarding masks. We are concerned that there'll be some resistance to wearing the masks. We will put some measures in place to anticipate that and try to work through that. The masks that we'll be giving will be given first to our low-income students to be sure that they have the equipment that they need, but also have a store of masks, likely the reusable masks, as the Finance Committee suggested, that we can use in case kids forget to bring their masks. And just, you know, any adult who walks into the building who doesn't have a mask will likely have to provide such or not allow entry into the building. But the bottom line is, we're going to be using our CARES funding to purchase masks. They will be reusable, and we'll be sure that we provide it to all of our kids, first and foremost, making sure our low-income students have exactly what they need. We'll also be buying hand pumps for every classroom, similar to what we see in stores now, where we currently have in queue for purchase the pump, hand pump sanitizing devices. But what we'd like to do is purchase the contactless sanitizers. We'll also be buying more electrostatic sprayers so that every one of our custodians in the district who comes in at night to do cleaning will have his or her own sprayer so they can all use the deep cleaning solutions that we've been using semi-daily since we've closed schools, but daily when we return to school. We've also started generating quotes, and we intend on buying contactless thermometers, infrared thermometers. We're examining the purchase of relatively expensive temperature screening devices. We looked at a particular device that is situated on a tripod and would be stationed at entranceways and connected to a computer monitor that would automatically screen people's temperature as they walk in. It would be a more efficient way of screening temperature than using the contactless thermometers. And of course, we have been talking about the need for us to incorporate testing of some sort. By the way, this is a snapshot of that contact, the temperature screening device that I told you about, especially their cameras on tripods. We envision if we can afford it, and we, as a safety committee and finance committee, feel we should go ahead and make the purchase, buy two tripods for each school that we could have two columns of students and adults coming to the building at the beginning of the school day. Testing took up a lot of our discussion time. There were several concerns that shouldn't preclude us from seriously investigating how we, as a school district, can incorporate testing in our protocols when we return. But I do need the board, the committee, to know that these are some of the concerns that came up. Students who may be resistant, families that may be resistant, a father, a mother, a guardian saying, hey, you know what? I don't want my child tested. If you have a problem, call me, and, you know, we'll work it out at that point. We would hope that we wouldn't have many resistant students and parents, but there is always that potential. There's also, of course, the viability of conducting these tests efficiently. And in the end, we didn't resolve how we would proceed. We recognize that we have to do more investigation. I appreciate Mark Krieger, Finance Chair's suggestion that I reach out to the OEM coordinator, Jim Polos, which I'll do in the next couple of days, to see what the county or the state might be thinking about in terms of school testing. Perhaps we can collaborate with local health agencies to support us, either staff our schools for a period of time at the beginning of reopening, or at the very least, provide us the testing materials. So this is definitely something that we need to continue discussing. We're taking it very seriously. There just hasn't been a resolve at this point. So that's all I have to share at this time. I'd like to take your questions, your comments. If you have any concerns or ideas, I'll be sure to take those.
Mark, was that your hand?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. So Scott, I hadn't realized the SOAR program was going to be, is planned to be in person in July through August. If we do that, of course, as I've said numerous times at the safety meeting and otherwise, when other countries have opened up schools, even on a limited basis, they've seen large upticks of COVID-19 virus in the communities, and they've immediately pretty much had to shut the schools down. So even a small program is very, very risky. So I question doing that in person at all, but if the board would accept us doing that in person, we at least have to have protocols in place for temperature taking, for questioning students to make sure no one in the home is sick, for having masks on all people, and starting to have a protocol in place where we can test people. Do you have a plan for that yet?
Oh, so essentially, yeah, absolutely. And I agree with everything you just said, although the testing piece, I'm not necessarily in agreement about just at this particular moment.
I understand.
But we are actually seeing this process as being a pilot to what we would do if we reopen schools soon, or when we reopen schools. So what we would like to do is put in place the protocols that the Safety Committee's been discussing, and yes, that would include the infrared thermometer checks. It would include wearing masks on a regular basis, buying masks so we could space kids at at least six feet apart. And although we didn't consider the verbal screening to verify that they haven't been in contact with anybody, that's certainly something we can incorporate. But in some, and what we're looking at is this being a pilot to how we would handle things on a larger scale come October, November. You know, before I, I see Chris's hand up, before I get to Chris.
Oh, no, I'm not done. I have two more questions.
Oh, okay. I, that's to say, one last thing, and then, of course, I'll pass it back to you, Mark. The mental health professionals and I are very concerned that if we continue, if we try to provide this kind of support to students remotely, it will, it'll be for naught. It'll be for naught. It'll simply sustain the same kind of anxiety and depression that we're trying to help our kids overcome. That's our consensus, but of course, we have to do this carefully.
How many students and staff are we talking about going into the schools for the SOAR program?
Well, so for, only 10 total individuals at one time. So that would be likely two mental health professionals. I'd like to pair two up at each school to run a session of eight students at the most, outside, weather permitting, inside in our large spaces like gyms, cafeterias.
Okay, could you provide the board a plan for this? Because I personally have serious issues with it, but I certainly like to see in writing what the plan is, how many total, what the date, you know, in effect, what the time periods are, how many people, as you just said, at one time, but is it, you know, and I don't need the answers now, three times a day, five times a week? What are the numbers? Because I am very, very concerned if just you open, you open the virtual newspaper, and you will see what happened in Israel and South Korea and Singapore, and it wasn't pretty. The number of cases associated with those schools doubled. And if, as you say, the state may not let us even open in September, why are we partially opening in the summer? And again, I had assumed incorrectly, obviously, that we would do it remotely just to give those students extra help. But I'm very, very concerned with doing it over the summer face to face.
I received a chat question about the public announcement of SOAR. We haven't made any public announcements. This is just at the very, we're just at the ground level now, starting up this program. There's certainly a demand for it, so we know we have to run it on some level. And Mark, you know, I do, I'll, we are being cognizant of the governor's directives as we proceed, i.e. graduation ceremonies now being allowed to be live. I mean, now, you know, starting July 6th, we have high schools such as Woodbridge Township that just made its announcement through NJ.com, holding very large graduation ceremonies outdoors. So there are schools moving in this direction, of course. I mean, I recognize that the board needs to be assured that we're going to follow a protocol like Woodbridge might be followed, to be sure that we're maintaining everybody's health and safety.
Well, it doesn't mean that this board necessarily thinks that's a good protocol or that the governor isn't being, is being not cautious enough. I remember he closed the schools kind of a week after we did and other districts did, and he should have closed them two weeks earlier. There'd be many fewer dead people in our state. So I take very little solace about what our governor or state government or federal government is doing. I wanted to ask, just, I'm sorry, I'm taking all the time. I wanted to ask two more, make two more comments or ask questions about the discussion we had in finance. The goal, the goal of the masks that we discussed, which you proposed or discussed very well about getting multiple cotton reusable masks for all of our students and staff, that goal didn't really discuss, I mean, although we had discussed earlier in the Safety Committee, free and reduced lunch students, students who couldn't afford it themselves, but this was rather for all students. I want to make that clear to the board and public who weren't there. The goal will be that you, as Jim Polos said, you want to come to the school, you wear a mask. And that depends whether we have a program in the school in the summer, whether we have a program starting in September because we open on time, or whether it's later. I think, again, taking temperatures, asking the verbal questions, wearing masks, all of that is part of a goal so that the minute we do it, we don't double the number of cases in Highland Park of people with this miserable disease. So that's very important. And then we did have that very good discussion about talking to Jim Polos, who's the coordinator for the town, about testing. One thing that clearly came out to me from the safety meeting, and I really appreciated everyone there, was the feeling that we cannot do this all on our own. The testing, even, I mean, the masks are doable, but the testing and some of the other suggestions from the WHO and the CDC and the state government and other state governments are all very nice, but they don't really help us. And especially for testing, we need help, and we should do testing. I don't know the scope of the testing, but we need help. We can't do it on our own. We have a nurse in each building, and it's difficult for us to do. So I'd like, I like that you're calling Jim. I like that we can hopefully get help from that. So I turn over the floor. I'm sorry I've gone on and off.
And if you don't mind, I'd like to call on Chris. He was the first up on the hand. Go ahead, Chris.
Well, I was going to really ask just exactly the same question. What are other districts doing as far as tests? Are they budgeting for them? Are they planning that health insurers will offer them? Are there other kinds of health tests that are already paid for by health insurance that are going on in our schools? And what kind of arrangements can be made for that?
So as you're aware, I had the county roundtable for superintendents, and so far, nobody has resolved exactly what they're going to do, but everybody has vented. Everybody has expressed concern, you know, how are we going to pay for this? How are we going to do this? But nobody, as far as I know, in my county, has actually suggested how they're going to do this. It's all up in the air.
Can we find out from other states? I mean, I like the idea that health insurance companies get involved somehow to help fund this. I mean, are there other states that are doing this, Scott, that we can find out about and sort of just like be creative, think outside the box about this?
Yeah, certainly Maryland, as I pointed out in my tailor notes this past Thursday, is a well-recognized, you know, leader in this. So I can, I can do some research on that, absolutely.
That'd be great to get a report on sort of like what kind of testing is possible? What could we do if we wanted to test? What are the outer limits of our capabilities? Understanding that there's many, many problems with testing.
Right, right. And I could turn key to my roundtable as well. It might benefit.
Yeah, fantastic. Yeah.
I saw Monique's hand up.
Monique?
I just wanted to kind of echo Mark's questions and concerns. I too did not, when we were having the discussion about providing support for students who we believe or the leadership team and staff identifies as being most vulnerable during the school closures, either academically, socially, emotionally, and otherwise, those are the students that are being targeted by the SOAR program. Is that correct? I mean, being included, but the core is to reach. So I think for me, I'm concerned about hearing that those are also going to be the same students that are going to sort of be our pilot group for our reemergence out of this unprecedented pandemic. Something about that definitely doesn't feel right to me. So just stopping right there, I think we need to really rethink, you know, think about that. You know, we're actually looking at putting students who we are already supposed to be most concerned about in terms of where they are falling as we return back to school in terms of their academic skills, their social-emotional processing of everything. We're actually literally putting them on the front lines of our plan to figure out how to come through this safely, come out of this safely. I mean, that does not feel right to me. So I hear the concerns that you must have heard expressed from your leadership team and staff about is if the remote model is going to really do what we want it to do in this case? But I don't think the answer to that is to then make this population be the guinea pigs to how we, you know, we do this. They're already. So.
I appreciate that point. Darcy?
Yeah, I, Monique took the words right out of my mouth, and I just wanted to add on, in addition to that, that when you first said that, my first thought was it would, it's not a, you know, even if we would be willing to use them in not, you know, to have those children in that position, it's meaningless anyway. If you're talking eight to 10 students and two teachers in a large gym, that is no test of what it's going to be like to have 200 students in a building and 60 teachers in small classrooms. So it's not, that's not any kind of litmus test for anything. So I log the idea to serve those students more effectively, but I think you have to be really, really careful about how that happens, obviously.
Okay.
And I just wanted to go back to our original, the very beginning of your presentation about working on anti-racist curriculum and how that's going to be implemented, and I put it into the chat just to make sure that you're aware and any teachers who are working on it, or any students also, there is a very well-established Black Lives Matter at-school group that's been working on these issues for years. They have a curriculum, curriculum, you know, multi-faceted curriculums that are available, resources. So there's no, that everybody needs to reinvent the wheel. There are people who've been doing this work for quite some time. So there are, you know, reliable, vetted, you know, resources available out there. So I would encourage you to take a look at those.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I just wasn't finished on the pilot program, and Darcy just made me think about the idea of the remote method not really serving the small groups. And I remember initially our conversations were about the fact that the synchronous learning in large group, with large groups, has not been very effective. But in my experience as an educator in the field of special education, I've found this really ironic silver lining during this time in that I'm able to meet one-on-one with students or in small groups with students, and they're actually loving this sort of very intimate kind of setting that we've been able to create, although, albeit virtually. So, I mean, I just wanted to kind of remind us of the conversation that we had first in Equity, and I thought you took this conversation to your leadership team as well, or started there before, that we were also looking at this as something that would hopefully encourage the students to want to engage. I know we're kind of all zoomed out to varying extents, but this is a completely different sort of way of doing it, as we discussed, right, in terms of making it very small group, having that intimate feel virtually. So I just wanted to make that point as well.
All right, thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, and then on to your point about the response to sort of where we are right now at this moment in history, kind of the largest civil rights moment that we've had in this country since the 60s and really globally. When we, when you and I discussed finding a way for our black students to have a voice at this time and to be heard, truly be heard, I think beyond the listening piece, it's also about using this vehicle as a way to empower them, like Darcy speaking to the fact that there already are, you know, Black Lives Matters in schools, organizations out there that are all about going beyond the listening to the action and the empowerment, and how do we help these students for finally feel like their voice is actually at the table, a seat at the table that you mentioned, organically grew, not as an organization put in place by staff or, you know, leadership. It was students coming to teachers, expressing their frustrations and their experiences with. Um, what? with what they felt as discrimination, or racial discrimination in the classroom, in the school building. So it, it really came from the students themselves. And that's what made that club, from my understanding, speaking to students who were directly involved and teachers, quite special because it was something initiated by the students. So to your point, Scott, I, I think this would be an opportunity to perhaps, again, given what students want to do, to reinvigorate kind of that type of a feeling and allow that also to carry over into decisions that are made at the curriculum level, you know, in terms of our disciplining, restorative practices, work, everything across the board. Because I think we've fallen really far short on that. So I don't want to get on the soapbox. But I just wanted to be clear that the listening session is, it's not just a listening session. At least that's not what it would be in my mind. So I hope you're in agreement there. And then that's the idea to really let it be a springboard for empowering.
Michelle?
I, I have some deep concerns about some of the curriculum that was proposed in the beginning of, of the presentation about anti-racist curriculum and other types of curriculum that would be taught. I'm not concerned at all about the content because I do feel like that's exactly what we should be focusing on. But I have to say that I'm not 100% comfortable with the teachers, the faculty, who might be new to this topic and in a very personal sense, might not understand what needs to be done. Being tasked with leading this type of education. I'm not suggesting that we have, you know, anything but a well-intentioned staff and faculty. But this is an area of expertise, like Darcy and Monique both said, that has, I mean, there's, there's African-American studies professors, there's history professors, there are entire, you know, college-level classes taught on these topics. And they are really intense. You know, similar to any kind of, you know, surgical curriculum in a medical school. I would want someone who knows and masters the topic to be teaching. So I admit that I feel like as a, as a white American, I am new to a lot of information and have been learning and trying for a very long time. But, you know, admittedly have learned in my adult life a lot more than I did in my youth because I was not taught a lot of these things through my history curriculum or my language arts or any, any kind of school curriculum. So in short, my concern is the entire proposition that we are capable of teaching these types of topics. I mean, this is, this is not something I feel that we have mastered. And so I hesitate to say that this is something that we can just do. It's, it's a little bit, forgive me, but it's a little bit arrogant to suppose that we can. So I would like to know what kind of professionals are we bringing in?
Yeah, I think in addition to what-
What type of experts are we bringing in?
What Darcy said about the Black Lives Matters at school website. Could we consider getting a professional in to advise about this curriculum? Rather than sort of making it up as we go along and trying to follow the website, but.
Well, that's certainly something I'm going to investigate. You know, relying on Edgar Fergus, Elizabeth Riley Williams, who worked with the Borough. I, I think I've introduced her. I mean, those are the folks who I would expect to get a direct and lead our teachers, not Michelle Rodriguez, our humanities supervisor, who doesn't have a background in anti-racism. It's no different than when we employed gender spectrum to work with Keith Royk, Dave Luxembourg, and Tim Stark to help incorporate LGBTQ inclusive curricula in our, our PE curriculum. But I, I, what I'm hearing from Michelle and from Darcy is, and I'm, and I'm in agreement, is the need for us, if we're going to rely on curriculum that might be out there already, or individuals like Dr. Fergus and Elizabeth Riley Williams, they'd be more directive controlling about this process. Not that we just have them come, do a workshop, and then the teachers write curricula, but they actually, they lead us down that path. That's if we don't, of course, just adopt a curriculum package that might be already out there. So I certainly, I, I hear Darcy and Michelle loud and clear. I really do.
I mean, is, is Professor Fergus and Ms. Riley Williams, are they experts in sort of in instructional techniques and educational and pedagogy for, for students?
Dr. Fergus is, but not necessarily Elizabeth Riley Williams.
Okay. I think, yeah, I didn't think that she was, but Dr. Fergus deals with K-12 education? Okay.
He's working, he's working. I got turned on to him from John Ravelley, the superintendent of Franklin Township. Johnson's some really good work there. And that's what I had Michelle Rodriguez reach out to Fergus. But, but that doesn't mean we have to stop there. I'm just sharing what we know so far. But I, again, I need to echo what I said a minute ago, that Michelle and Darcy have a good point. And Michelle, you're right. I mean, what I'm learning, and Monique knows this, because she and I have been texting each other and emailing each other. All the years that I've considered myself an ally, an LGBTQ ally, an ally of the Black Lives Matter movement, I really didn't know as much as I need to know. And I'm really feeling like this era, this current circumstance right now, is compelling me to go to that next level. Monique and I had conversations about the, my messaging, my messaging to the community and the need for me to be more assertive in that messaging. So I hear you, Michelle. I think you're right. I'm learning that myself, that it's, it'd be arrogant of me to think that I could direct my teachers to work anti-racist curricula.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that we've been talking about the Amistad Act standards and curricula for, for a while. And it's been, it's been difficult. So yeah, I mean, I, I hesitate to call myself an ally, or I would like to be considered an accomplice, as I've said in previous conversations. But that's not a label to give myself. You know what I'm saying? I, I don't feel like that's appropriate. So it's hard to look at what we are doing and then to still see the structure that we're working in, where we are the administrator or the educator and the topic being taught to students who live in black bodies are sitting there listening to us. I mean, I can't imagine that that's going to work. It's really, it's really difficult for me to imagine that that will work. So I, I'm, I'm sure that we have lots of resources that we can pull from. And I would like us to do that before we start to, you know, put together a plan on how to implement anything. I, I, and I definitely feel a little bit concerned about bringing, you know, students in to talk to teachers. I feel like we're putting students on the spot.
Wait, I'm sorry, regarding the listening session?
Yeah, I, I, I guess I didn't get as much of an idea of what that was going to look like or feel like. But I'm thinking that, you know, somehow it's going to be someone in administration reaches out to all the black students in the room and says, you know, come on, let's pick your brain. I mean, I hope it's not that awkward, but it feels like it.
I've actually been reaching out to some of our black teachers and I'm asking them to help me. I know that they have, that they're role models for some of the other black students in the school. And I'm asking them to co-facilitate this with me. I won't feel comfortable doing it without them, but I, but if I bust, I will. But that's my plan to work with. Look, we don't have many educators of color in our school district, but we have some. And, and I want to give them a voice. So I'm, I'm just waiting to hear back from them, but I'd like to co-facilitate with them.
I think the board would want to hear about whether that should be a stipended position or, you know, if this is going to involve work outside of school. We don't want to rely on our black teachers to do some of all this extra work because they happen to be the only black teachers we've hired. So, I mean, I doubt, that's a topic for finance, I think, but it's something-
Yeah, that becomes something which we do long-term. Yeah, right now, I, I'd like to have it now as soon as possible.
Right.
To, and then consider the long-term after the session to see if it goes well.
But even now, let's make sure that we're compensating our black teachers for the work that they do. They're probably as exhausted as, as many African-American people seem to be these days.
I also feel like there's a lot of, there's a lot of, God, I don't even know what to say. Darcy, I, I think you were going to say something. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I was just going to be blunt and say, maybe this needs to be really thought a little bit in what the goals are and why you're proposing doing it in the first place. And it does, it's sounding, the more we talk about it, it's sounding a little awkward. You know, I think there's, you know.
The motivation is fantastic. We need, I mean, we need to empower black students to the extent they don't feel helped.
Well, I, I'm going to have the listening session regardless, but whether it's a long-term program, that's something which I can, of course, discuss with the finance committee. I've got a model that somewhat off after my colleague in Batushin, superintendent there, who, who ran a similar session that I understand what rather well.
Okay.
So I'll leave it at that.
So you'll, you'll give us more information about how it's going to look and-
Here, I'm, I'm just, I'm just going to put this out there, Scott. It does sound like, here's how it's resonating for me. It sounds like, and you know, please don't take this in a disrespectful way. It sounds like it's more for you than it is for the students. You know, I, I'm not sure if this is really revolving around what is beneficial for those students and if they want to participate, or it doesn't, it's not feeling very organic.
Monique, how did, how did you think it went with Batushin? What did you hear from them that experience?
Well, from what I heard, and I didn't hear from anyone in the actual meeting, this is secondhand knowledge, that it was productive. And I, I can just say, for me, I'm thinking, as Darcy is thinking, you don't want to, this is not something you want to force the, right? Or to, as Darcy is saying, let it come from you because you need this. It's about providing an opportunity for students who do feel like they want to be heard right now to have that moment. And so that's where I am kind of coming from with wanting to support this and hearing how it did apparently go well. Again, that's not firsthand knowledge in Batushin's case. But, and I'm seeing schools, you know, particularly predominantly white institutions, to be honest, actually doing that now. Because if black students and, and students in general, but certainly black students are feeling like they need to, they want to be heard, they want to feel like their administration is responding to this moment in tangible ways that embraces them, that, you know, that really puts them in a position of, again, being heard with that matching sense of it's going to go somewhere, it's going to lead to something. But you may initiate this or, or make this suggestion to have this listening session and not get anyone who wants to do it, which is fine. You may find that there are no students who want to do this. But I believe that at least making this something that you present or make available and how you presented this key, who was involved in this presentation. I know you talked about some key teachers that you felt would want to be involved in this and could be effective. Makes a difference to me. But again, not something that should be, and I know you wouldn't force it, but clearly you want this to be something that kids, students want to do. And even if it's just a handful, I think it's a very important gesture for you to make at this point beyond the email messages to the border community.
Right.
Actually bringing people into a room, into a safe space.
And, and if you don't mind me sharing, Monique, I appreciated that Monique was positioning this as being an opportunity for our black students to talk about how the Black Lives Matter movement is seen in context of the school environment. Not just like an opening session of, hey, what are your grievances? Talk to me about it. But rather how they feel the, the school district is responding to the Black Lives Matter movement as we're seeing it take root now. You know, I mean, it's like completely evolved.
Right, what do they-
So it's not for, yeah.
What do they, what do they feel like we need to be doing better as a district? I mean, this is a time where people are really wanting to make demands, right? Point out flaws, inconsistencies in, from their viewpoint. And yeah, I mean, I think you might find that there's an interest in that if you present it and the way you present it is-
I'll report back to the board how it goes. If, if, again, I get the cooperation of the faculty, I'm hoping will work with me. That's my report, unless there are any other concerns or questions.
I have some sort of less, less deep, less super interesting questions. I mean, I mean, really, it seems like a lot of my concerns are kind of trivial at this point. But in terms of the SOAR group, do we have our infectious disease doctor advising us? I mean, we're not getting much good stuff from the state or the federal government, but I know you have an infectious disease person that's, that's been contributing to-
I do.
Let's not get-
I haven't thought, no, I haven't thought to reach out to him. But now that I understand the board's concerns, I'm certainly going to be reaching, I'm going to be doing my due diligence and following up. Look, I won't move on anything. And I do like the idea of reaching out to the infectious disease specialists on our committee. I won't do anything in terms of hiring and, and public announcements until I, I'll report back to the board president and the vice president, Mark and Ann, on this.
Okay, and we'll get the information out there to everybody else. I'm still waiting, I'm still a little confused about what exactly the groups are going to do. I mean, I understand they're going to be sort of a support group. Is there going to be a specific, I mean, is it just sort of like? I'm not, I'm not completely certain that I understand the purpose of the groups. I think it's a wonderful motive, the motivation is there, but I'm not. Is it for kids who are depressed, for kids who express an interest in dealing with their depression? Is it for kids that are identified by staff? What's?
No, it's, it's going to be open, but in its current form.
Yeah.
It's proposed to be open to, open to all students who would like to work with our counselors and the clinicians to, who are concerned about their emotional state. Now, at the lower grades, that's going to mean reaching out to families, not kids necessarily. At the upper grades, it might mean reaching out directly to the high school students. We'll have to get parent permission, of course. But as Scott Rock pointed out, it's going to be, it would be a combination of providing them a support group to talk about their feelings, about what they're, what they've experienced in the last four months, what they're concerned about if we come back to school, what they're feeling right now, and also to teach them coping skills. Like what, how can we then work through your fear and your anxiety if we reopen come November?
Okay.
I, I'm going to be leaving the lesson activities and the planning, whether it's remote or live, up to the people I hire. Again, I foresee pairing up a counselor and a psychologist or a dean, as in like Juliana Luxa, if she's particular, she's one of the individuals who wants to be part of this program, and, and a school psychologist. So people who have two different skill sets, but both related to mental health.
Okay. All right, I'll be really interested to see what the flyer looks like and sort of what, what the-
Well, I'll start, yeah, I'll start by first, I'll start by forcing, first, following up some of the concerns and, and in the next couple of days and talking to you and Mark and go from there. Before I start producing flyers and, and whatnot. The posting went out. I'm going to go ahead and go through the selection process because, again, we'll run this, whether it's remote or live. But I'll check back in with you.
I actually do love the idea of having something live because it feels so much more authentic for counseling. But you're right, we can't think of these kids as guinea pigs or treat them that way. This is going to have to be handled very carefully. And, and like, I think maybe Darcy said, or Monique, or somebody, you know, if we're talking about 10 students sitting six feet apart, it really won't be anything like what school would look like. So, I mean, that might, to some extent, assuage concerns about trying to test a, a school opening remodel on our vulnerable students because it's really not going to look like that.
I, I understand how, how I presented it, did not, it wasn't perceived well. And I can understand how, why.
Monique, what were you saying?
Just a quick question. Sorry, so one more question here. So I know initially part of the discussion or concern, at least in Equity Commission, was about also including social, emotional learning, but also the students who may need to brush up and, and just get some support academically.
Right.
So is that going to be a different program now? Or, because I'm not hearing that now in the description.
Well, we brought the SHIP program back at the lower grades. We hadn't thought about bringing it back at the upper grades. So that would be focused on the academics. But in terms of SOAR, I mean, that was only intended to be for mental health support.
Right, but what we discussed in the committee meeting was certainly, initially it was about how do we help those students who, for various reasons, are getting the leap out of this, you know, remote learning and academically. We already know all, you know, all students are going to come in with skills regression, but we looked at trying to close some opportunity gaps academically. And that doesn't mean testing or not having to do it in a way that formulaic, project, it could be project-based, it could be doing interesting things that students like to do in the summer. And I know you talked about possibly using Title Fun, Title I funding for that. So is there going to be a split then between, you know, the funding that could be used for these students between maybe a SOAR-type social, emotional-focused program and then a second program? Or is that even-
SHIP, SHIP could, SHIP, SHIP was just going to run at Irving and Bartle, could very well also be one at the middle school, which is what, and, and at the high school, which is what we've done at the past. So I, Monique, you're right. We talked about that in Equity and Excellence, and I have to come back to- So I, I, Monique, you're right, we talked about that in Equity and Excellence, and I have to come back to the academic component.
In my experiences with my own kids is that their classmates and, you know, possibly them, some of them are falling quite a bit behind. You know, I work at home, so it's a little easier for me to give them a boost. But I think you're gonna find a lot of older students, you know, middle school and high school that are struggling. And that might even be more of a need than, you know. So I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, look, we, Monique's point is, is well taken, you know, what, yeah. I guess I'm stuttering because one of the concerns that our faculty has had is that we're not finding we're getting much out of the remote learning process.
Right, right.
And there was, there's some hesitancy about even running SHIP at the lower grades because it would just be an extension of remote learning that we're already doing in the last four months. Now, perhaps as Monique pointed out, if we wanted very small groups as opposed to what some of our teachers are doing now, which is 20, we might get more bang for our buck.
Right. I mean, Monique was talking about how it could be an intimate, you know, learner, teacher experience. I mean, that's not what's happening now. Is there some kind of PD we could get from people who are really skilled at this? You know, people like perhaps Monique who, you know, who have some experience with this. I mean, my kids' classes unfortunately aren't sort of seminars where people are, you know, participating vigorously. It's either, it's either asynchronous recordings. And nothing against the teachers, they're doing the best they can in this incredibly trying experience. But I mean, one reason it's not that engaging is a lot of it's asynchronous. And then when it's synchronous, it'll be like a big class of people, you know, not really engaging very much. Except for, you know, in a couple of classes where the teachers are really very skilled. I mean, can we sort of have some of our teachers who are really, really good at the remote learning turnkey that? I mean, even just informally, we need something to, I mean, some teachers just, it's, like for me, it would not come naturally. For other teachers that I see, you know, working with my kids, it comes really naturally. The kids are engaged, they're paying attention, they're yelling out things, you know. I don't know.
I, I, I think, what I will do is, because we don't have another board meeting until July 13th, I will follow up with a detailed email to the entire board. Ann and Mark, I'll focus on the live setting for SOAR separately, but I will follow up about the academic support as well as the mental health support that Monique is talking about. I'll give you a detailed rundown by next Monday or Tuesday so that you're not waiting until July 13th, which would be too late for us to be running any separate programs.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. That's fantastic. Are there other questions or comments about Scott's presentation? Okay, so what, what Mark and I learned from Scott that has not been shared with everybody, we will get out to everybody else. All right, sounds good. Okay, it is time for our board committee reports and recommendations. Board, yeah, here we go, curriculum. Michelle, do you have a report for us or do you want to go over the new agenda items?
They're really quick, just the two items on the agenda. The approval of the evaluation instruments for 2020, 2021 school year. And those are listed on the agenda. Item number two is the approval of the infectious disease response plan. Everyone should have gotten a copy of that in time to read through it. And I just wanted to remind everyone of part of the conversation that we had in our curriculum committee meeting previous to the last board meeting, where we made a specific recommendation or ask to Scott that he diversify the review board for any of those evaluation instruments to be implemented. Because as we discussed earlier, the entire list, I think it was 15 or so staff and administrators were all white, all similar backgrounds. And the only one that was a person of color was the, the sole para on the list. So we're looking forward to seeing a more equitable list so that we are not making evaluations through a singular, narrow lens. So we're looking forward to seeing that updated list. Because I think that Scott, you had said it was, it was almost time to kind of rearrange that group.
Yeah, I, so I'm, but I'm meeting with Keith Presti tomorrow, and one of our topics of discussion is gonna be diversifying the DACT, the District Evaluation Advisory Committee. So I might by July have an updated group to talk about to the board.
Okay, so I think, you know, the assumption from the curriculum committee was that it would look much different than it looks now in significant ways. And I think the rest of the committee would agree. That's the assumption. Yes, no?
I can't, I, I look, but I'm gonna be with Keith and we'll talk about diversifying the group so it's a better reflection of our student body and our faculty. That would include more educators of color and Hispanic educators. And Asian educators for that matter.
Well, one of the other things that I think was an assumption was that since these people are doing the evaluations, that they would be coming from different perspectives, not just, you know, the fact that they are belonging to a certain group, but that, you know, they were all understanding the goals of the board as they're written down in our, in our goals. So that was my, my assumption.
These are the people who don't actually do the evaluations, but they do help plan any changes to the evaluation instruments. They check in with us about how things are going. Although just as much a reason to diversify is, diversify our leadership team, which is the group that's actually doing the evaluations. So I should probably have a new group in place for the summer into fall.
Okay, so, so yeah, that was the only thing that I wanted to highlight to make sure that we got an update on. That's it.
Thanks, thanks, Michelle. Other questions or comments? Okay, Mark, would you like to go through the new finance items and report anything you'd like to report?
Yeah, so I, I did wanted to mention that we met this evening before the board meeting. We discussed the financial matters regarding the federal and state aid. So that is, again, we are, we are applied to and are, I believe, receiving or going to receive up to $237,000 in CARES aid. That's the federal package that's being, that's being administered by the state. And that's for Corona-related materials, things like Plexiglas thermometers, shields, masks, et cetera. And then learning, learning, special learning money that's associated with, with, with the pandemic. We also, Linda reported to us during the week that FEMA has opened a application and will be categorizing the kinds of things that we're buying to what can go to the FEMA, to the FEMA application, which will pay 75% of the money, but then the other 25% could come out of the CARES money. So we are getting some significant federal and state aid and we just have to use it well. And so that is, that is, and then all the, then this kind of bleak time, this is kind of good news. I wanted to be, repeat again about the masks, because I wanted to make it clear what we discussed and, and at least the direction that I think the committee was on board with. And that is something that Jim Polis brought up at the, at the safety committee meeting, which is that the WHO and the CDC both recommend for students and staff coming back to schools that they'd be given three-layer cotton masks. They're not as good as N95 masks, but they're almost as good. And they're, they're wearable, you know, the N95 and the KN95 and the surgical masks are very hard to wear. I have each, by the way, I have one of everything. And the cotton masks are actually wearable. You can take a walk, you can walk around the house. You can actually wear the cotton masks and they're washable. So what the county did, and this is what Jim presented, what the county did is they bought three, three cotton masks for each person. And they're, they're, they're washable. And so you wear one, you have one maybe in the hamper and one that recently got washed, and you just rotate them. And they'll last a while. And we need 2,000 masks, round numbers, and we need three per person, that's 6,000 masks. The masks, the cotton masks bought in quantities cost $2 and change. So we're talking $12,000 or $13,000 and we, which, which we have, especially out of the CARES and FEMA money we have. So what the county is doing is issuing those. And you come into the county office and you wear it. And as I've been asked in the chat and, and of course been thinking about, we need a policy. So I plan later this week to talk to our attorneys about it. We may need a policy for masks, we may need a policy for temperature taking, we may, we certainly need a policy for testing. Any extra things we do around the coronavirus, we need, or COVID-19, we need to have something that passes muster and, and passes policy. So I think policy committee is gonna be working on that. I think I've covered the meeting more or less, but we're moving forward and we expect to get the information from Linda and, and Scott on what we need to spend all this money on and when we're ordering and what we're doing. So as far as the agenda goes, does anyone have questions about that? Any of that? Okay, so as far as testing goes, as far as finance and facilities go, I'm gonna go down to item number four. There's a few new items. So Ashton Burrell and Keith Strickland are gonna come in and do welcome to the world. This is the funding for that. They're, they're going to do that, I believe, June 16th. The, we have, oh, I'm sorry, we have Advocate, which does contracting work for us, but that's reimbursed by our custodial service. And we have, I don't know how to pronounce it, Educare?
Edusir. Edusir, Edusir.
Edusir. And that's credit recovery per IEP, and I neglected to ask you this, Scott, I apologize. So this is, this is what for working with students?
Yeah, this is a student who needs to take a class and can only do so using Edusir, and it's written into the IEP.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. So I'm gonna go down, we went over this all last week. I'm going to go down to item number. Let's see, so item number 33 through 36, we did not review last week. So we're going to increase the bid threshold from $40,000 to $44,000 effective July 1st. We're gonna approve a contract renewal with Source for Teachers for next year with no increase in rates. We're going to accept donated services, although again, I, I didn't ask you this and, and another board member has asked me about this as well. What is youth sports performance of New Jersey? And when are we gonna be able to do this? And do we need to vote on this now?
Well, I can tell you that sports hasn't been decided yet. Some districts are for, and you may have noticed in under personnel that I have, I mean, in this boat, have not recommended coaches yet.
Right.
Don't plan to do so until August. So there's a potential that we could table this unless Linda disagrees.
I don't disagree. This is just an announcement of a donation of services. I think that they're planning on helping the district whenever the district needs their help.
I got it. Do we know what they do? That's the only question. What, what services are they performing for us?
I must admit that I'm not aware.
Could we, could we put this off till July and, and accept their donation then once we know what they do? I mean, I'm happy to take the acceptance, you know, the donation, but it would be nice to know what's being donated.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
And then we have an approval for bedside instruction number 36. And that's new. And that's the report. Well, and you're, you need to be muted.
All right, Boomer at work here. Here we go. Personnel and communication. Source for Teachers is a new item, but it's standard. We do have a number of new teachers that Scott is recommending we hire. That's numbers five through nine. Did you want to say anything about these teachers, Scott?
Well, there are a lot of teachers here. I just, you know, instead of going over every one of them, I'm just gonna highlight a couple. You've got to know that we are hiring two student teachers who were very successful student teachers. We're really, really excited to have them join us. Jenna Leonardo, let's see, number, I'll start with number six. Dana Jabonyak, who I had a chance to actually formally observe in Franny Drackman's, Drackman's class, who's phenomenal. So we're gonna bring her on board per the board's approval. And number nine, Jenna Leonardo. Jenna was Brooke Balthazar's student teacher. And then, yeah, she did a great job. And then we interviewed for a replacement position in, this was January, to replace temporarily Catherine Burr-Lavelle, who was taking paternity. Jenna was the one we hired and she did a phenomenal job, applied for the permanent position and we'd like to bring her back. So those are just some highlights.
Thanks. It's great when we have our student teachers are able to come back. So we've had an ideal opportunity to observe them and assess them. That's great.
Rutgers is very happy to.
Well, it's great.
Very pleased.
All right, the other items, other teachers we're glad to have coming on board, we talked about them next, last week. Let's see, the next bold-faced item, you'll see number 20, there's some additional summer curriculum writing. There is an addition, yep, additional summer curriculum writing. Approval of a Title One coordinator for ESL and the Rising Seniors Intervention Program. Staff for the Summer Literacy Program. And that may be the end of the new items. One second, please. Oh no, here we go, I'm sorry. 32, we have a new home instructor item for approval. 33, same. Extended school year teachers, number 35. Number 36, translators for summer ESL letters. And number 37, ed services, that's our special education services translators being approved. And that's all I have. Are there any questions? Okay, let's go on to policy, Mark.
Yes, so we went over these policies last week. There's the two new policies for first reading. And there's the five policies for second reading. So there's nothing, nothing new there. And if, does anyone have any questions about them?
No questions. Okay, Equity and Excellence, there's no items to be moved, but Monique, did you have a report you wanted to share?
We haven't met since the last meeting, so I'm not sure. Did someone share out the notes from our previous meeting? The last one.
I have to admit, I'm not sure. Let me see.
I, I didn't, but I, I can't say, Monique, that the MOA was approved by our local police department, so that's complete.
Monique, have we signed that MOA?
Well, I think Scott, you said that it was approved, but now it's for it to go to the county prosecutor, right, for signing?
Correct. I mean, I have to say it was approved by the local police.
Right. So, okay, so in our meeting, we did.
But what, what, could I ask, what, what was?
Monique, do you want to finish up and then we'll have Rob come in? How about that?
I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. Monique, go ahead.
I was just gonna, gonna say that in that meeting, in our committee meeting, we talked about just our, our concerns. The final kind of point of concern was in the addendum was the requirement to allow law enforcement to have the capacity to activate our school's video feed equipment. On live stream access. You know, kicked around, I probably had, I probably had the most concerns with allowing this kind of access. And, you know, the MOA really does kind of box you in. I mean, it's this document that you're sort of, you're forced to sign. And the most that you can do is attach what we have done, addendum items, trying to give us some wiggle room with some of these concerns. And this is one of them where, and Scott, I'm not, I don't have the language in front of me, but I, I think.
I did.
That only in the case of imminent threat, yeah, if you could. Video feed will be activated only in such a case in which the safety of students and, and/or personnel is deemed an imminent threat of death or serious injury, i.e. shooter, bomb threat, et cetera. So I mean, that, I, I think we all felt comfortable with, with obviously having that level of security. And also kind of that limitation to when, it's not just flicking the switch whenever you want sort of thing on their end to get access to our video feed. However, I will say that since that conversation, everything else that has been happening in this nation around, you know, schools all over looking at, and I don't know if I can say this now, but, because this was not a part. say this now, but, because this was not a part of the meeting, so if you want me to hold off.
I think it's fine to talk about it.
Yeah, okay, so, because this ties into the MOA. And most school districts are starting to really kind of examine their relationship with police, particularly schools who are, you know, paying police department to be our SROs in schools, that's not our situation. But in New Jersey, we do have this, you know, archaic, even though it does get revised, memorandum of agreement that, you know, is really forced upon districts to sign. And I, I really, I really want us to take a serious look at this point at, what do we need to do to interrogate this requirement at this point?
Right.
And is it statutory? Is it, I know it's a state requirement, all districts are required to do it, but what sort of statutory law is behind this requirement? And I would say at minimum, this should be, we should be talking about making this optional, right? This should not be a document that all districts have to sign off with, as is, you know, with minimum to no room to modify it and contextualize it at all.
Were you thinking we should put a pause on further approval of it for now?
Yes, that's my, right.
Okay. Let me, let me, let's hear from Rob and then we'll circle back to Scott. Rob?
Well, yeah, so all I was going to say was, first of all, I hadn't seen that final draft. So the fact that, that you put it up, I, I think that that's probably the best that we're going to come up with. In terms of the concerns that Monique talked about, I have the same ones. And I'm not also certain, like, for example, if we simply decided we are not going to participate in that, and just as a what if?
Rob, we're losing you. You want to try cutting your video?
If we're not going to participate, how does that actually change anything?
If we don't participate?
Yes.
If we were not to participate, what would, what, what would actually change?
Exactly.
I'd like to ask Ari Schneider that question. I don't know. I mean, is it statutory?
Let's find out before we continue on this path. Does that sound reasonable, Monique?
To Rob's question, the question is, if we don't participate, as you say, well, how does this change sort of the, I guess, the relationship that we have and the leverage, let's, or for lack of a better word, the authority or the privileges that our local law enforcement has to engage with our students?
Right.
So, to me, yeah, it's a, it's a matter of going back now to that document and seriously looking at the ways in which not participating would really change the nature of our relationship.
And certainly for members of the public, it's important to know that, you know, of course, we have certain legal obligations to cooperate with the police department. Those would not be disappearing. This is not like a radical crazy thing where we would say, we're not going to cooperate with the police department ever. This is a question of, does that MOU expand their right for access in a way that we have to accept? I'm sorry if I interrupted.
Would you like?
Misinterpreted a pause.
I could certainly reach out to both the county executive superintendent and our council, and then follow up with the board and just share, turnkey what they tell me.
Let's start with our council.
And we're talking about for the renewal that is upcoming next, correct? I mean, we have gone through this at this time, you know, I think we, we probably have concerns, but we're talking about the future renewals, correct?
Oh, I don't know, are we?
Could we pause the renewal process for this year, this coming year?
Okay.
I mean, I don't know.
That's the impression I thought we were talking about right now.
Okay. Well, let's talk to the attorney this week then.
Yeah, 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 no.
There are other school districts, starting and school boards, starting to do the same in New Jersey. You know, really looking, taking another look, unless they're maybe more on time than we are in getting this done. We are.
The board, the board approved the MOA, I think in, well, maybe, is it?
We did without the addendum?
No, I don't think so.
Why would we do that without the addendum? Maybe we had to approve some?
Okay, okay. So if we haven't approved it, yeah, that just makes things cleaner.
Right.
I'll get back to everybody.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Yeah, no problem. Do some mic work on that, sure.
Other, Monique, did you have more of your report? I forgot where we were in the process. Were we asking questions or were you reporting?
Yeah, let's see if there's anything here new that we haven't already touched on in some other conversation.
What I was going to say was that last week, Monday night, we did touch on the MOU, but we did not go through the rest of what we discussed in our meeting.
Okay.
And thought that perhaps you would want to do that this week.
Okay, all right. So second item on the agenda here was the, Scott had shared the Infectious Disease Response Plan for 2019-20, which the, I guess, the leadership team devised to address reentry after closing. Scott, at that time acknowledged this is a work in progress comprised, and it was composed by an ad hoc group, basically, of stakeholders. Oh, I'm sorry, let me correct that. There will be an ad hoc group composed of stakeholders that will be convened to continue working on the plan that leadership team has started to devise. And that ad hoc team will be put into place once the governor has sort of determined and announces what's actually going to happen this September. Correct, Scott, you're kind of going to wait till you know what the plans are to put together this ad hoc team to flush out your plan.
And that includes resident, parents, guardians, not just faculty.
Right. And then you shared with us the comprehensive guidance that you considered, and I, we should probably, can we pull this up on the screen? Or no, can you pull up a part of your, maybe a screenshot of your response plan? Because I'm not sure if everyone is even sort of in the know as to what this actually is.
Hang on.
May have mentioned a bit in previous meetings, but from what we, what we talked about, you did look at also incorporating a culturally responsive, sustaining guide that we had looked at from the NYU into this plan, as well as equity and making sure that the plan is rooted in equity lens through and through. Right, so.
See that equity, yeah.
Right, so, right, and I see you have it broken out by school and looking at different areas of the reopening, whether it's health, safety, equity. And you have scenarios as to what needs to happen, who would be involved, who, taking leadership roles in these different assets, in different aspects of the reopening, correct?
Correct.
I know, we also talked about summer assignments and, I mean, that came up in terms of, again, this concern about just students who are really going to be coming in at a disadvantage in terms of academic development during this extended closure. And this is where we kind of started to talking about, or continued the conversation about how can we support students who are going to suffer the most, or are suffering the most during this time.
Yeah.
And at that time, you did talk about, of course, the ESL and ESY program and graduation retention program will, will run remotely. That's, that's a given, correct? That's still the game.
Correct. Yep.
And you moved into the other component, which you've already discussed, which is now called SOAR. But again, our focus initially was really on sort of the academics and how to address that particular area of need.
And I do, I do assure you, I'll get back to you on that, okay, Monique? I don't want you to leave the meeting thinking that that's something which we're leaving behind.
Okay, wonderful. And then the last topic we did address was the change in the National Honor Society Advisor. Michael McCray will be recommended to be the next advisor. Once installed, Scott will conference with Mr. McCray and Mr. Glasser, just to provide them an overview of the priorities that we've talked about. I know in Equity and Excellence, around the diversity of NHS, that's a better reflect our student population. And Scott's plan is to kind of direct or task Mike Glasser with coming up with an action plan, you know, for fostering.
And I'm giving you a little sneak peek at our next meeting, which will be July 6th, at which time I'm going to share some initial steps we're going to be taking. You can see it up there on the screen right now.
Perfect.
I'm actually pleased already with what Mike, even though he hasn't begun his work, is already thinking to do. Things like bringing back people, the students of color and our other minority students who graduated, were in the NHS, back to the school to speak with peers and try to generate more interest. So we'll talk more about that on the 6th.
Excellent. And you will be reporting out to Equity and Excellence as well.
Yep.
Okay. And that's it, I have. Did I miss anything, Rob? I feel like it's been a while.
No, I just really wanted to, and I don't know if you guys can hear me, but I just really wanted to emphasize how, how important we, we feel it is to really do some follow-through and make sure that there is a plan for the summer for our most vulnerable kids. You know, I know that it's been a very, very difficult year in so many ways. I fear for kids who could potentially be lost for years if, if we don't provide the proper resources for them now.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, anyway, that's, that's, that's my only addition.
So Scott, you'll get back to us on further consideration of the SHIP program for our older students?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, yes, I'm, yeah. And by the way, at the end of the meeting, if you'd like, you can stay behind, I'll follow up with everything I'm going to be getting back to you on, to make sure I have all my ducks in a row. It's, it's not a lot, it's two or three very important things, but I want to make sure I'm very clear about the direction I'm going to go in, okay?
Great, thank you, Scott. Did anybody have questions for Monique or comments?
I just wanted to know, you know, quickly, if there was any kind of agenda item or, you know, voting measure that we needed to take as far as that concern that we had about the PD for teachers regarding remote learning, to see if we could, because that is really, I think, a major equity issue as far as this new virtual school system that we have, making sure that our teachers have what they need to provide, what they can. So I, I didn't know if we should add that to the agenda or vote on that, or if there's something we can do to make that official.
I mean, I don't know that we have anybody we're going to hire.
Well, we talked about turnkeying or?
Right. Oh, yeah, that's true, we did talk about that, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe it's just an investigative piece at this point.
Maybe we could add that to Scott's list if it's not already there.
Right.
I was saying, potentially hiring PD to further support our teachers who are, who are still tasked with this incredibly new educational lift of, you know, educating students remotely, or potentially having our more, our teachers for whom it feels more natural, who are more enthusiastic about it, potentially turnkey some of their skills.
Well, we, we, look, I, I think what I need to do is first tell you where we stand right now.
Okay.
I haven't done that yet. So how about I include that in my, in my email follow-up? Share with you the specific workshops that we're facilitating. Who's facilitating them?
Wonderful, wonderful.
And, and maybe, Michelle, what, what I should do is reach out to some of the faculty who I trust can give me the real deal about what they hear their peers' needs are. And be sure before I get, you know, we make any decisions, we, we know what the current place is.
Yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, I know that you mentioned you were going to be meeting with Mr. Presty tomorrow. Maybe Mr. Presty would be the right person to, you know.
That's a great idea.
Allow those, those opinions.
Absolutely.
I know it's late notice, but maybe by tomorrow, he could have some, you know, some list of things that the teachers would like help with.
Yep.
Yeah, but thanks, thanks for following us.
That'd be great, Scott. Yeah, I mean, some teachers are like me and can barely use Zoom, probably. I would imagine they've learned how to do it now. And others are just so fluent with it and so good at having those conversations with students. So when, when you said that you thought going back to school might not happen in September, a stab of fear, icy fear went through my heart, Scott, and probably that of parents who will be watching this recording.
Yes.
So, yes, if, if we're going to continue with remote learning beyond August for our summer school students, we need to pump it up. I mean, teachers have done a wonderful job on no notice at all, with no support initially. I mean, no PD initially, they were just thrown right into it, but now it's time to up our game.
I, I see Chris has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Chris. Oh, yeah, that's your hand.
On that, on that note, you know, thanks to all the teachers for.
Oh, yeah.
Adjusting. But, you know, can you explain a little bit, you know, why are some classes interactive and others are just asynchronous? And what's the situation going to be like in the fall?
Right.
So I haven't made this pop-up with the faculty yet, but the leadership team has heard from me already that if we have to come back remote in the fall, there's a strong chance I'm going to be directing our faculty to be teaching on a rigid, rigid schedule of, you know, a half-day schedule, similar to what some districts are doing now, including my wife's district. There's now, I, look, I don't think what we've done the last three months is sustainable beyond three months.
Right.
So that's, that's something which I'm already thinking about, Chris. I think, what I can foresee is running 20, 25-minute classes, half-a-day schedule. Every day, students have to check in with their kids, with their teachers. Now, whether they're going to do that or not remains to be seen. I know my wife struggles to get kids to come, and then she questions how she can with it all, she penalized them for not attending. We'll, we'll talk about that when the time comes. But for starters, I do see us going to a more rigid schedule.
I just, can I just say, I kind of have an immediate reactionary concern about that. You know, like Anne brought up the fact that, and Monique did too, how this is sometimes an opportunity to have a one-on-one, more like a tutoring almost, where that's a really effective way of, of teaching. And so if we do a rigid schedule where they're teaching 25 minutes for each class, the opportunities to do that one-on-one are gone. So I don't know that, that makes me think good things will happen if we have that kind of rigidity in the way that we are, you know, hamstringing our teachers on how to run their classes. I just don't know. That's, that's my initial reaction.
I'll tell you. I have, even though this is my vision and what I would like to direct faculty to do, as I, as we talked about minutes ago, this is going to be a decision I have to get input on. I mean, I, if the majority of the faculty says, no way in heck can we do this, we have to run every other day, I'm going to take my cues from them. Look, we have a very high caliber group of faculty and leadership. I need to rely on them for input. But, but if left to my own devices, I would go to some kind of rigid schedule. Look, whether it's daily, whether it's every other day, our kids need regular contact with the teachers.
Michelle, I can envision, I don't know if this is Scott's thinking, but I can envision during that half-hour time slot, there could be individual meetings with students and teachers. Wouldn't necessarily need to be 25 minutes of lecture with everybody sitting silently, I hope.
I mean, I, I know this is all kind of very amorphous at this point, but yeah, that was my hope. My hope is that it could be, it could be much more creative, you know, as far as the teacher's direction goes, like which, which way they want to go.
Right.
And maybe it's a mixture of, of ways in which they interact with the students. Obviously, I want the students to have whatever time they need to interact with the teachers. But, yeah, I just, I all of a sudden got this reaction, thinking if we're going to go to a rigid, you have to, you know, speak for 25 minutes in lecture and then, like, no, I can't support that.
Well, I, I didn't say 25 minutes of direct instruction.
Yeah.
I'm talking, the reason why I mentioned 25 minutes is because I do not foresee us going to more than a four-hour day. Look, you read all the, same articles I've read about how Zoom just sucks the energy out of people. There's no way I can have faculty and teach, and students running a seven-hour day remotely. So that's just, that's not going to happen. Four hours, I think, is doable. So that means then if you're going to break down a daily, a day-long schedule, you only have about 25 minutes to work with kids. But perhaps it could be an every-other-day series of meetings with kids. So, you know, my senior, incoming senior will have a schedule that runs Monday, Wednesday, Friday, something along those lines. But I do think there has to be some kind of regular routine connection.
Yeah, and somehow we need to get more kids involved. I leave that to your expertise, Scott. I mean, I see Zoom classes running now with four kids and then, you know, there's 16 kids that aren't there. And, you know, I, I understand, like, what can you do? I, I would like to talk more offline about what we do do, what we are doing for the kids that haven't been showing up. I know.
And I'm not going to, sorry.
I know we, we do have social workers and we have our teachers calling people and we have, but we should talk maybe offline about what more we're doing for the kids that haven't shown up at all, you know?
So I'm certainly not going to penalize those, because we're not going to be punitive and punish them or give them failing grades because they're not showing up, because we don't know what the circumstances are. And I know I speak to the choir here, I know I'm preaching to the choir, the board would agree. We, you know, we have to handle this delicately.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other Equity and Excellence questions or comments? No. Okay, before this meeting sucks the life out of us, let us go to a public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. If anybody in our public would like to speak, please either blurt out your name or raise your electronic hand if possible, or unmute your video. Give it a minute for people to fumble as I am with Zoom.
Well, I saw Keith Presti on the agenda for tomorrow's meeting when, per Michelle's recommendation, I went to update the agenda, so I know he's, he's on the web somewhere. Thank you.
Yeah, I see, we, we do have some members of the public here, some teachers, so I want to make sure they have a chance to pipe up if they would like to. But I think they're probably more agile with Zoom than I am, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on. They do not want to speak. All right, let's go to our board action items. Michelle, would you like to move the curriculum items?
Yes, thank you, Anne. I would like to move items number one and two.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. And Linda, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Simoresti?
He left the meeting.
Oh, jeez, I didn't even.
Oh, um, okay. About 8:45 PM.
Thank you. It's different when you don't see them getting up out of their chair.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mark, finance and facilities?
Yeah, I'm gonna move items one through 34, table 35, and move 36.
Is there a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
I would like to move the personnel items. That's number one through thirty, one through 37. Is there a second on personnel?
Second.
Would you call the roll, please, Linda?
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes, on all but abstained from 35.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
No on three, and yes on the remainder.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
All right, Mark, policy?
Yeah, I'd like to move items number one and two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Could you call the roll, please, Linda?
Ms. Simore, oh, sorry, Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, Equity and Excellence, there are no items to move, is that correct?
Right, no items.
Okay, board liaison reports. I think we could probably move through this pretty quickly. Scott, does Ms. Yang have anything for, no?
No, but this school alliance hasn't met, and I can just tell you that library hasn't met since our last report, they meet in two weeks.
Okay, wonderful. And will you be attending or Ms. Rodriguez?
I, I will.
Wonderful, great. Okay, Mark, I have you for Borough of Information, Highland Park Television, and Cable T Advisory. Has any commission?
No, no meetings.
Okay. Rob, Magaziner, has the Ed Foundation met?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't think so, right, Scott? I can't, I don't think so. Let's just, let's just say until further notice.
Yeah, I know. We should probably just do that, right, all right.
Hey, Rob, I actually did get a Zoom meeting invite for tomorrow night.
Oh, I didn't get that.
Lucky you.
Okay.
Let me know if, yeah, you know what, you're not on the email, huh?
I, I don't feel bad. It's okay.
Okay.
Thank you for sending it, Scott. Thank you.
All right, no problem.
Mr. Woodward, Commission for Universal Access, any meetings?
Nope.
Okay, Public Library, Shared Services, nothing. CPAC, Monique, are you aware that CPAC has met, if CPAC?
I have not heard a word, so.
Okay, POSOC, is POSOC still under reconfiguration, reorganization?
I don't think there's really been any action, to be honest, since the school closures.
Okay. Understandable. Human Relations is on hold. Board of Health, Mr. Rizlevich?
There's a meeting this Thursday.
Oh, great, okay. We look forward to hearing what they have to say. Greentown, Mr. Rizlevich?
No update.
Okay, Delicate to School Boards, Darcy's not here, I don't think there's been anything. Michelle, anything to the Middlesex County School Boards? I think you just went to a meeting last week.
Yeah, I, I went to a meeting, and I think I reported out on that last time, but I wanted to say that I did also attend a webinar that the school boards put out from, it was on June 3rd, and it was best practices for effective committees.
Oh.
And, yeah, so they, they have a template for committee reporting that I did request, and I'm waiting for that from our rep, Marian Friedman. And also, I got, basically, there were a lot of questions that were asked, and so the attendees asked these questions, and then the leaders or the, you know, webinar folks from the NJFBA put together a Q and A list of all the answers.
Great.
And I won't go through them, but I will forward them to all of the rest of the board members, because I think that there was some really great information in there. So that's what I wanted to share. But I also had a question for Rob regarding the Board of Health. Is that okay?
Oh, that's fine with me. Is Rizlevich still here? Oh, there he is.
Hi.
He changed squares, rectangles, he changed rectangles for me.
Yeah, the Brady Bunch square.
Yeah.
Rob, I just wanted to ask you really quick if maybe you could get any kind of input that the Board of Health might have about our conversation regarding the SOAR program. I think that was the SOAR program.
Yeah, SOAR, HP SOAR.
I can bring it up on Thursday.
Sorry, what?
I can bring it up on Thursday.
That's what I was hoping you would say. Thank you, Rob.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that, Rob, that would be helpful to ask them how they feel about having a live environment learning session. Yeah. Thank you. And you could, by the way, Rob, you can email me, if you don't mind, email me, let me know what they say.
Oh, absolutely.
Before July, you know, when we meet again here.
I just acknowledge that we're back to that when I was looking at the notes from Equity and Excellence. Scott, you did mention, to your credit, that you would like to be able to provide that summer program in person if possible, so I just.
I mentioned it.
Yeah, I mean, so you did mention, I just want to put that out there, but again, as, as we talked about it, I just wanted to make sure I made that clear, and with the concerns that I raised earlier still standing.
And I think I mentioned it too swiftly at last Monday night's board meeting. I kind of threw it in there. Maybe I subconsciously was concerned you guys would have a problem with it, but I, I recognized the concern.
Okay. Other questions about board reports, board liaison reports? No, I have no president's report. Is there any old business? New business?
I have a, an announcement. The petitions for school boards are available from the County Board of Elections. The board members that are going to be up for reelection will be receiving a packet with the petition packet.